It's been five years. Do you remember how many years we've been...
It's been a while.
Okay. So, I mean, it's not done. Let's see.
Why, do we have a political argument so much?
My father had to be on the streets.
Now, what?
My father had to be on the streets.
Oh, boy. I would love to have been there for that.
I can argue with this.
About eight thousand dollars.
Pretty hard, but you want to...
And that's actually a bigger truck.
I'd argue it with a oak tree.
Tell me, does it spend a little? I think the rent was twenty-five.
I'm hoping you took some of that stuff out.
This is... The thing is, has taken...
Was the Sinclair guy not happy that you just showed up over here? You tell him I said anything.
They're plenty happy, but they've got to have the head guy approve anything they say.
All right. We'll give us some strength and force side to lead a little old townie down on the street in Arrow. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the minutes.
October tenth, two thousand and sixteen, the Board of Alderman met in regular session with Mayor Hewnall presiding. Alderman present, Rene Edwards, Ron Stansberry, Rick Winter, Dot Krickseizer, Delmer Strange, Ryan Mason, absent none. Mayor Hewnall called the meeting to order. The invocation was given by Delmer Strange and the pledge of allegiance was recited. Minutes of the September twelfth and September sixteenth meetings were read and approved. Collector's report was given. Treasurer's report will be given at the next meeting. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by Delmer Strange to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Under citizen comments, echo Menjes, address the board and encourage them to participate in the annual Halloween Safe Stop this year at the Knox County Community Center on October thirty-first from four to six P.M. Last year, they had three hundred and forty-five kids participate in the event. Mark Ross of Klingner and Associates did not attend the meeting, but sent a written report updating the board on the sewer project. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Ron Stansberry to authorize the mayor to execute the contract and notice to proceed with K and N excavating. Motion carried unanimously. The board discussed the request to change order for an LP gas-powered generator at the wastewater treatment plant, but took no action. They agreed that the city needs to know where they stand with the grant money and the rest of the project before any decision is made. Under department reports, Ty Parish Utility Supervisor met with the board. He reported that the street repair was coming to an end, and he thought they had used most of what had been budgeted for this project. He would like for the board to budget for more street materials for two thousand and seventeen so they can start back in on the streets come spring. He will get an estimate of how many streets they were able to work on this time, so the board will have an idea of what they need to budget for. Ty also reported that cinders have been delivered. There's been some concern with a possible leak in the road that goes south of the ambulance base. They plan to do some checking and possibly start digging to try to find the issue. Ty is also planning to get at least a few of the water services hooked up to the new line on Campbell Street before winter. It was also brought to our attention that anything wider than twenty-two feet on Highway Six through town is the city's responsibility. Ty will be checking into the areas that need to be repaired along this route. Mike Wright, wastewater superintendent, met with the board. He requested that the board consider approval for a change order for Kia Cut contractors to repair seal relays on wastewater treatment plant pumps and replace relays and terminals for seals on wastewater treatment plants, pumps. Motion was made by Delmer Strange and seconded by Rene Edwards to approve the change order for Kia Cut contractors and increase their, and increase their contract nine thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. Motion carried unanimously. Mike also reported that he has approximately twelve more loads of sludge to haul and then will be empty for the year. Kelly Hayes, chief of police, met with the board. He reported that he has been in touch with Aces Shaw's representative and that they plan to come to Edina sometime in November to check on their properties. The mayor stated that he would also like to be notified. Kelly also reported that he is still working on getting yards cleaned up around town. There is no unfinished business, and under new business, the board is invited to attend the Northeast Missouri Region C Solid Waste Management District Council Fall District Council Open Meeting on Wednesday, October nineteenth. There were no Alderman comments. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Ron Stansberry to adjourn. Motion carried, the meeting was adjourned.
That's the way I remember it. All right. City of Edina, the board members would like to welcome Ms. Kathy Fuller onto the ranks.
Ready? The collections report for October, is that a good speech?
That'd be a good start.
Okay, water, twenty thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-six cents. Sewer, twenty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Sanitation, fourteen thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and four cents. General fund, eight thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Recreation, two hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty cents. Street, four hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Special lights, thirteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Meter deposits, nine hundred dollars. Reserve and improvement fund, one thousand six hundred dollars and fifty-seven cents for a total of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-six cents.
Any questions? Thank you, Mrs. Fuller.
Thank you.
The treasury for food.
Good evening.
How are you, Mrs. Peggy?
Good, well. Okay. First of all, do you have any questions on the treasurer's report?
And you have both votes, they're last votes in.
The September one, you'll see, we started making payments, so we paid all of the interest and we did the bonds. So, you'll see we have quite a bit go out to get that interest for the period of the construction line. And then we are making monthly payments now, so...
Do you have any concerns?
No, everything else is pretty routine. We will have budget next month, so anything that anybody has, we need to start looking at that. Margaret's already got some of that information, so... No ties, no...
What have we, I know when I initially came, I said something about the special light fund. What are we going to do then, and that, or what's your recommendation?
We transferred some money this month in order to get through the rest of the year. We didn't do as much as we anticipated, I think we went half of that.
I think we did six thousand and ten thousand was the amount, I think, that we mentioned that we might need to transfer.
Okay, so we transferred six, thinking we should have some revenue start coming in in December. But this is going to be a prime problem, or it is something that we will need to start working towards because our cost of our streetlights is not going down, so...
Well, I think I remember one time the other mayor had mentioned checking with Emmerich about new lighting, that'd be more feasible. Did he ever say more about that, Margaret, remember, he talked about that? Well, they're, are they changing out all, I mean, now, as they...
Changing out all theirs to LED.
All those to the LED.
Correct. As, as they burn out, that's the way I was told.
Yeah, okay.
But now, does that actually cost less to upgrade them, or does that just cost less because you're replacing them less often?
No, it costs less to upgrade.
It burns as much light.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't know what the price of change is, like the newer style, the hams, like a hundred and thirty-five or a hundred and fifty bucks a light. Does that come off of, does that go on to us?
If you were to go out and purchase them, it's a hundred and fifty dollars a light.
And right now, of course, as they replace them as they burn out, there's no cost to us for that.
That's, yeah, right. So, we're just paying for the energy consumption.
Right, yeah, our bills are just for the electricity we're using, so we might see a change there.
So, we're going to need more information before we can make a decision.
Get your mini guns out.
So, where would you want?
Margaret?
Yeah.
If you had it, or an app, or a count.
Probably an app would be the better bet.
It's a different color of lighting where we have the amber up around the square area of the bright little light. It's more directed.
Yeah.
You won't have it cascaded out, you will see straight, not much in the background.
Thanks for that reminder because we did make that transfer. The other thing that we are going to be implementing is a payroll change in order to be in compliance with Department of Labor. We'll have everybody hourly, subject to overtime. Anything over forty hours, they get time and a half, or comp time, half time and a half, one or the other. With the exception of our police department.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement, public safety is, is different, different rules, so...
That starts January.
Well, it has to be done by December first, so we're just going to implement it with our next payroll, I think, is what we talked about.
Right, yeah.
So, we're well in compliance with those changes, so...
Any other fun upcoming changes? Any other up and fun coming changes?
Not that I know of. You are probably due to have some time to sit down and discuss budget. Maybe that's the point of December.
At your appointments.
Okay, we'll get through Thanksgiving, and then we'll do that before, before council meeting. Okay, anything else you want to mention about your wife's?
Is it, is it not time to start thinking about a new trash truck?
I think that's one of the things that he's already given the information on. So, they're getting bids, and they're getting that information for it to get. We're also looking at the water tower, the outside of it.
Yeah, actually painting it, I mean, washing it, but painting it, yeah.
Right, and the vivid green is...
It's not what we anticipated.
About fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, my lord.
It's actually not a bad price for that size of tower. It's not a bad price for that size of tower if you're going to wash it out and overcoat it.
Hey, you don't know sound, Lewis Town, theirs is worse than ours. Oh, theirs is really bad. Nasty bad.
If you don't get that mold off there, it will eat through that paint, and it will be a bigger problem later on.
Theirs is really bad, I was surprised.
The problem with ours is it's chalky, so the mold spores stick to it really easy. When they repaint it, it'll have a slicker finish, so that won't, it won't be as dirty as often because it'll be slicker. That mold spores and stuff in the air won't stick to it.
I don't think that you've ever repainted that since it was built.
No, it's never been.
You got twenty years of life out of that paint job. That's pretty darn good.
I don't think I would paint it for fifty thousand dollars. I don't think I would.
Usually eight to ten years is important.
Or sewer money? Sewer water. Sell some advertising on it.
Market along the railroad track somewhere, you get painted for nothing.
That's what I thought, the graffiti, and we have people come in for miles to see our graffiti.
If there's no other question, I don't know. Thank you, Peggy.
Fifty thousand dollars. Good night. That's kind of what I said when I think. We get some of our own boys to write, going on up there with the frame.
There's no citizens' comments, we'll do local bills. Does anybody have any discussion on local bills? I asked about the three tires, that's not three tires, that's split up between three departments.
Oh, okay.
So, that's that.
That's what we're on the way to.
Right.
I'm making motion to have a bill. I think so, I just have this project.
Oh, same as you. Yes. What do you think, Mr. Mark Ross, cleaner and associates, update on sewer projects?
Sorry. Howdy, Mark. Good, and yourself? Wheels off? Haven't been today. Not bad? Pass out a couple things.
What is that, can I have one?
Should be enough for her. Okay. She has to get out the rest of it, and I'll start here. Okay. Here's his pair. How it does, I was here last month, it's my son's last football game, so...
Nobody blames you for that.
Just a quick update, that's what this memo is, municipal pipe tool, they told me that they plan to be done with the grouting of the laterals by the end of the month. And just so you know, I've been keeping the tally on the liquidated damages as of today, we're at one hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred, that's two hundred and thirty-nine days over, so... That's something that we'll need to decide if we're going to be at a point where the next pay request that comes in, we'll have to, we'll have to decide what we're going to do with that, all those things, when the next pay request comes in. So, there's really no action tonight, other than that's where we're at with it. We will talk about where we're at with the money situation, since I understand that was the big question at the last meeting, so I'll get to that in just a few moments. Willis Brothers, they're done, I haven't had any warranty work come up with them. I think we did have that one issue down by the ambulance, which we discovered was a sewer that we thought was supposed to go out to the street in front of the house, but it ran toward that street, and then ninety, then it went down to the next street and never got picked up because we didn't work on it. We didn't know it was there. So, that's getting fixed, I think that was the source of the water issue down there. So, nobody knew, they started digging and found it, and it turned, and then it turned again, twice, and then went into the sewer. There's no way anybody could have predicted that one. But we'll get that, I think that there's a bill on that that'll come through, and we'll get that covered by the grant money, that would be an issue. Utility Solutions, they did come back the last week of September and addressed a couple of issues. I think the, the, there's still four manholes that Jared Merwood, Modot, is not particularly happy with. And I went and looked at all those again today, I think the worst one is a half-inch low. And we wanted them all to be a little bit low because we didn't want them caught by the snow plows. I think there's one, maybe two, that are still a little bit low, and so they're out on six out there. Just west of East Street, there's a couple of them out there, so one of them, you've got to practically cross the center line to hit, but people apparently do it and complain, so... So, we'll, we'll get those two addressed for sure. The other two, I, I'm just not seeing where there's an issue with them, but...
Mark, excuse me a minute, are you talking about the one out east of town?
Yeah, yeah, west of East Street, though.
Right, that's the one I had the feeling that lived there complained about, how rattles.
It's rattling again.
Well, I don't know, it hasn't been lately.
But now, Modot says it's too low, so we can't win, it seems.
Okay.
But that, there is one out there that, two out there we need to address.
And then what about the one down below the hill that looks like it's lopsided, is that another one to be adjusted?
That's not one that anybody's complained about, or that I'm aware of as, as been an issue.
Well, it's lopsided.
I think there's, the one that's lopsided is one we didn't do anything, but...
Right, there was another one.
Yeah, so, we didn't leave it that way, I think it was already that. Kia Cut Contractors, they've done that seal wiring and conduit stuff, and they, they started work on the replacement service, but I think they've stopped because depending on what we do with the generator will impact where they go to finish that work, so... Which brings us to the two, the two items that you guys wanted to talk about this meeting, wanted to know where the money situation was. So, I passed out a sheet, and you'll see some things that were crossed out on it because I got some late information today while I was on the road, so I went through and, and crossed things out, and so this is kind of a summary of where our current contract amounts are, the cost to date, the original budget, and the status. You see the two highlighted ones, those are done, and so there's really nothing pending on any of those. Municipal Pipe Tools Contract Number One, and you'll see a pending, it says pending CO, and it has one hundred and twenty thousand right there. The reason that number is what it is is because we took, if you remember, we had a big deduct on the replacement of like two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars on Willis's contract. If you, if you look at that, we, we had an original budget of two million thirty, and we ended up at about one million eight twenty-two. Part of that, we determined during construction that we could shift over to lining rather than replace because it was cheaper. And so, we did that. So, that adds to Municipal Pipe's contract, but deducted from Willis's contract. In the end, we've deducted two hundred, looks like two hundred and eight thousand dollars or so there, we may be adding in about a hundred and twenty thousand of that back in. So, by doing that, we saved ourselves probably close to eighty thousand dollars. So, it's one of those decisions we made as we encountered things in construction to shift things around a little bit. And we got, we got, we got a good product out of it, so it was well worth doing. So, when you look down there, there's, there's the construction subtotals, and then you've got the Klingner budget and where we're at, Devaney Law Firm, Gilmore and Bell was the bond counsel, and then we had a contingency number. I finalized where we're at with contingencies with Cheryl Elliott, and so that number where it says contract status, you see a one sixty-two, nine thirty, seventy-four, that's what we have in contingencies right now in the project. Down below that is what our funds were, we had three million, four sixty-four in loan, which is closed, and we had a million forty-seven thousand in grant, total four and a half, four million, five hundred and eleven thousand. So, what do we have left to do, and what are the sources of funds to do it? We know we're going to have that change order, that's, that's an approximate number, it's fairly close, it says one hundred and twenty thousand. And we have these two pending change order requests, one was for the breakers and starters for the lift station pumps at fifty-two, sixty-eight, and the other was for the generator at fifty-eight, nine seventy-two. When you total those two numbers and the one twenty, you get that one eighty-four, two twenty. So, that's what our potential cost would be if we go ahead and execute both change orders. Funds available, we have that one sixty-two, nine thirty, seventy-four, and our contingencies remaining. And so, as you can see, the contingencies don't quite cover what those potential costs are. However, we have a liquidated damage number that keeps growing every day. So, when I look at total funds available, we have about two forty-two, four thirty, seventy-four, so, you know, roughly, if you did the change orders and also approved the municipal change order when it comes in, which we're anticipating it being about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you're still going to have sixty-something thousand dollars left. So, that's kind of where we're at with the money. We've been able to, to save, save money in the project and still get a, a good project, and we've still got some money left. And I asked Cheryl, I verified with Cheryl Elliott at USDA, what happens to any remaining grant money? The remaining grant money has to be turned back in, turned back in, it cannot be applied to a payment or something else, so... What about our streets, we'd ask about that at one time, can we add it to our streets too, on those streets that we... You can do, I don't know that I asked her that specific question, if we worked on that street in terms of open cutting it, we might be able to do something along those lines. It's going to be a tough sell because we did concrete patching where we could, I think we ended up with three or four streets that had, had the chip and seal. So, to do it on another street where we didn't open cut it, we wouldn't be able to, I know that for sure. I don't know which streets we, which you might have in mind, but that's going to be kind of tough to determine since we already have a surface on our trench. We, we do still continue to have some broken concrete issues. Yeah, and that's, that's warranty issue with, with, with... I'm just more concerned about how it's going to hold up with the ground settling underneath it and traffic. I mean, the, the street that it's on is not seeing any more cars pick up or trash truck. Yeah. Most of the concrete patches that I've seen, not around manholes, seem to be holding up pretty well. It's some of the pavement around the edges of those that hasn't. Like, I drove quite a bit of it actually this, this afternoon when I got into town, and just kind of seeing how things looked, and there were a few spots that, concrete's there, but the street around it is not, not really there in some places, so... And I'm sure Ty can attest to that. You know, we might be able to fix some of those, it looks like you've already done chip and seal on some of those, though, so...
Trying to hold it till we...
Yeah, I mean, that's a good program, it'll buy you some time.
Yeah, glue it together for now, duct tape it. See what's open up.
Till we turn it back to gravel.
So...
Lord, hope not. Is it, is this figure, is this something we're going to have to argue with them about, or is this...
Well, in my opinion, there's no argument, I mean, they started three or four days before the contract due date was, was up. And so, you know, they just flat out started late. They signed a contract, it had a time, they got a notice to proceed, they agreed to it, so... What, one of the tactics that I'm going to suggest is that we, we apply the liquidated damages to the change order we have there and just not have a change order. So...
That's not something that's going to cause us grief down the road?
How would, in what way would it cause the street?
They'll be bringing lawyers in saying that we need to pay them, and...
Well, I don't think they have any, if, if the contract is pretty clear on what...
I don't think the government's doing a change order and having to carry their two hundred and...
It's gonna be a tough sell because we did concrete patching where we could, I think we ended up with three or four streets that had, had, uh, the, uh. Chip and seal. So to do it on another street where we didn't open cut it, we wouldn't be able to, I know that for sure. I don't know which streets we, which you might have in mind, but. That's gonna be kind of tough to determine. Since we already have a surface on our trench.
We, um, we do still continue to have some broken concrete issues.
Yeah, and that's, that's warranty issue with, 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 uh.
I'm just more concerned about how it's gonna hold up with the ground settling underneath of it and traffic. I mean, the, the street that it's on is not saying where cars pick up or trash truck.
Most of the concrete patches that I've seen, not around manholes, seem to be holding up pretty well. It's some of the pavement around the edges of those that hasn't. Like I drove quite a bit of it actually this, this afternoon when I got into town and just kind of seeing how things looked and there were a few spots that. Concrete's there, but the street around it is not, not really there in some places, so. And I'm sure Ty can attest to that, uh, you know, we might be able to fix some of those, it looks like you've already done chip and seal on some of those though. So.
Trying to hold it till we.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good. Yeah.
Glue it together for now, duct tape it.
Till we turn it back to gravel.
So.
Lord, hope not. Is it, is this figure, is it something we're gonna have to argue with them about or is this?
Well, in my opinion, there's no argument, I mean, they started three or four days before the contract due date was, was up. And so, you know, they just flat out started late, they signed a contract, it had a time, they got a notice to proceed, they agreed to it, so. What, one of the tactics that I'm gonna suggest is that we, uh, we apply the liquidated damages to the change order we have there and just not have a change order.
I don't see it to.
Something that's gonna cause us grief down the road?
How would, in what way would it cause the street?
They'll be bringing lawyers in saying that we need to pay them and.
Well, I don't think they have any, if, if, the contract is pretty clear on what.
I understand that, but I know how the legal shit works.
Oh, I understand that too.
Didn't say that word, but.
They, they were signing papers agreeing to that one day, I mean.
They executed a contract.
They already did the contract.
We already have a contract, we already have.
And they have a bond. They're aware that we've talked about it and they've not said anything about it, I mean, the reality is, is they really don't have a leg to stand on, so.
My only concern is, is if we did just do a change order, how long will that carry out?
Well, this change, you're talking about the hundred and twenty thousand? It's not additional work, it's actually work they've, they've had to do already, so it's not dragging their time. There's two approaches you could take with this, we could go ahead and try to settle liquidated damages and then we know exactly where we're at. And then you can decide what you want to do with the remaining of the, remainder of the money, or you can, uh. Do your change orders and we just let the meter keep running and then negotiate it later, I mean, it's. You can, you can end up charging whatever you want, if you want to charge less, I mean, I'm just going by what the contract allows you to charge. And your attorney is a pretty good attorney and I'm sure that he can.
What is their estimated completion date at this time?
They are estimating it'll be done by the end of this month, but I've heard that before. Uh, I heard that last month, I heard the month before and they didn't get done because their grout truck kept breaking down. So, um, but they've been here, what, two, three weeks now, Ty, consistently? So they're here working on it now, we got them here now.
They've been working through the night.
Yeah, I just saw, uh, it was five thirty or so.
You what?
They run a day crew and a night crew.
Oh, okay, yeah, I knew they'd be working.
Yeah, I, I saw a truck here about five thirty or so.
We were gonna look into.
I'm talking midnight.
If we couldn't get this, cost of this generator somehow. Walk through the state or something, where it would be from municipality for a lower price.
I don't know if we can do that for grant.
Yeah, I don't know if we can through the grant money either that way. We can get this paid for by the project through the grant money.
But then if we spend that, we're, we're basically at zero balance.
Or is this what's left after that? That's included, that one eighty-four two twenty includes that number?
Fifty-eight thousand.
And that two forty-two four thirty is what's available, so what I'm saying is, is even if you do the generator. And you, you know, that liquidated nu- damage number keeps growing, so you still have about fifty-eight. Fifty-eight thousand and change. After you do that generator, yes, even after you do the generator.
Okay, that's, I like that better, so.
I think we're all struggled with, with the cost of the generator, I think we're all thinking it's awfully pricey.
So I'd struggle with the down the road upkeep on it and stuff like that.
If you buy something like that, you just have to maintain it, but. I don't see that price as completely unreasonable given it's a ninety-two KW. The last natural gra- gas one that I did was a two fifty KW and it was three hundred and some thousand dollars.
Does a lot of small entities like we are, do they have that expensive type of generators?
Not everybody, uh, you know, Pomeroy has one, I believe they have one. They're a little bit bigger than you guys. Paris does not have one.
The only, the only thing that I'm looking at is we have the avail- availability to purchase it now. We have the, we can own the thing and in the future, we have no hope of ever buying it outright.
You'll, you'll never be able to buy it for that probably.
When we were, Mark, you're familiar with the vulnerability. Okay, when we were filling that out, that was one of the things which maybe Ty or Mike, they were here when we were pulling it out. That was one of the things that popped up, you know, through all of those things, like what we have and, and don't have. And that was the only thing in the end that popped up that we didn't have was a backup.
I just see it as your best opportunity.
It's, it's like insurance, you pay for your insurance monthly and hope you never use it, but you have it.
I just hope we can afford to maintain it.
I think the maintenance though with the generator is gonna be mainly what oil changes and, and like daily, like daily.
Filters, oil, it's like an engine.
Operation, you know.
Filters, oil.
It has to be run once in a while.
Uh, you can set them up to run weekly for a short period of time to test. You put them on test cycle, which is what I would recommend you do. Yeah, it's a little bit natural gas, but it's no worse.
Right, this is the project we're talking about, it does all that.
This covers all the rest of the wiring issues at the sewer plant with that.
We need to make sure that the breakers and starters are all part of that, right, Mark?
What's that, I'm sorry?
The breakers and starters haven't been.
Yeah, yeah, that's that fifty-two sixty-eight number, that's, that's the other one we're talking about.
And could we also purchase another pump for his sewer pit down there, we still have money for that. Cause we've seen the prices of what those could be.
Yeah, at the very end, when we say we're done and nothing else is gonna happen, if there's some money there, we can do that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying use.
But I, I'm still, I'm saying.
I'd like to sit on that, what we have until.
Right, I understand.
Until something pops up and says, well, here's another ninety thousand we owe somebody that we ain't got.
I, I agree, but if we can pull this off right before the end.
We might as well spend what we got, cause.
It's going back.
Do we have a time limit?
I mean, not, spend it just to be spending it, but spend it wisely.
I mean, we'd all like to get done with it at some point. Really, there's not gonna be anything that holds us. Still do that, I mean, weather right now is suitable for that. Doesn't change the next week. So if that's what you want to do, I've got. Separated change orders for those things, one is change order nine, which is the fifty-two sixty-eight for the breakers and. Starters for lift station pumps and then the other one is change order ten for the generator. So we have to do those one at a time, that's what you wanna do.
I think that's a consensus I'm picking up at the moment.
Okay, so somebody will have to make a motion one way or the other.
Would you like to make a motion, do, uh, do the breakers and starters for the lift station pumps?
Change order nine.
Table.
Change order nine. Kia Cut Contractors. That's for fifty-two hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
All in favor?
And then, uh, change order ten is for the generator with Kia Cut Contractors for fifty-eight nine seventy-two.
For what?
Generator for fifty, for fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars.
What'd you say, the fifty-eight thousand?
Ryan made the motion, I see no second.
I just wanna make sure that this money right here is, is not gonna be a problem. And you've done enough of this. But that's not guaranteed.
We, uh, we did this at Monroe City on the sewer project and the city offered to cut it in half and so. City didn't have to offer it, cut it in half, but. Even if they did, you still, there's something on the back where you're at here, just leave a little more or a little less left, but. We sat around the table like this, no lawyers present, so this is what we're gonna do.
This is how it is.
Was their original bid?
It's on your sheet there, uh, one million one hundred and twenty-four thousand thirty-four dollars. As you can see, that's their ten percent, they're gonna lose ten percent right there.
They'll make it up somewhere else, another job.
I don't, I don't know why they ran behind, I mean, they just got, they just started late. Not, not the brightest business practice if you ask me, but I'm not running a business myself.
Don't be on the business wrong keeping that up, will you?
They're doing a number on the street there by the, the water tower where they fill up their trucks.
Oh, yeah, and that hose always stays out there as of the day, yeah.
We still have a motion?
We still have a motion.
Motion for, uh, a generator.
So that's where they're at, um, any questions remain on that? Oh. We'll talk about Purcell Street. I've been waiting on schedule to scan in on when they're gonna start, I intend to have a pre-construction meeting before they do start. So I've asked for them to give me at least a week's notice so we can schedule that, so we'll get Ty and whoever. If you wanna be there, Mr. Mayor or somebody else, but.
It'll be rather pertinent to give the people we're going across stands up so they can.
Yes, I agree. At this point, with people, I know people in the past have done Christmas decorations down across there. Might wanna wait.
I don't think that's gonna be an issue this year.
They're not going to this year, okay? I was just curious about that, cause I know they've done it in the past.
One of these copies is mine, ours, I assume?
No, I'll get copies, I'll get my copies. So soon as I get that, I'll, I'll get it, let you guys know, we'll just get that scheduled. Any other questions?
Did the boy win?
Yeah, they did, they won.
Fifty-six and nothing.
Whoa.
They more than won.
His son, the last meeting we had, he was at the son's bowling game, but he shouldn't be, his last bowling game.
Did the other team show up? Evidently not. All right then, well, thanks again, Mark.
All right, I'll likely be seeing you next month.
All right, y'all take care, thanks.
Be careful. Department reports.
I guess you're talking about part of my stuff right here with the budget, um, I'm working on that. Um, just to catch up from last month, we got that leak issue taken care of, resolved, that was a sewer project deal. I've been trying to get streets painted up here, the parking spots and curbs, all that. Um, something to think about, I, I don't know, I guess we're beginning on it. We stuck a camera in the storm drains up here. Of course, we can't go very far, cause galvanized and, you know, but. Uh, that's gonna be a nightmare to put lightly, I guess, I don't know, there's. There's old, uh, foundation drains hooked into those from probably buildings that was up there, you know, like the bowling alley and stuff, like probably just hooked into some of those and. There's drains up there, places I don't know where they go, um, you know, tubes are bad in places. They've got forty-fives and nineties in, they don't know for sure where they go and it's, it's, it's pretty interesting, I guess. I, I don't know exactly where to start, that's something to be thinking about, that's probably gonna be a.
Major undertaking.
Undertaking. So just something to kind of roll around, like I said, we, we put our camera in four or five different grates, and like I said, you can run sixty, seventy feet at max.
How many culverts look like they need to be replaced?
One of them deals if we're gonna do it, I mean, that's like I said, there's some of them I don't know where they go, I mean, if it runs in there and they tee. We can just push our camera and it goes one way and I don't know where the other direction goes, um. So one of them deals if you're gonna go to digging it up, you might as well do it all when you do it, but. Some of them still look all right as far as condition, they're naturally, the one that's been issued under Casey's is, it's, it's full, it's pretty well blocked. They've put so much asphalt in it, it just kept falling in, that that one's pretty well plugged. It's still.
That the one that runs north and south?
Uh, east and west, it'd be right there at the stop sign between Casey's and Sinclair. Been that hole and a cone. And the state got a bunch of patch in it, it's fallen and it's, it's full, pretty well full, blacked out.
Where's that going?
It's all gotta go the four-way. No, there's tube underneath there, yeah, and it just, like, like Kalins, it all runs down the road, runs to Hawkins and drops in a grate down there. And it all goes under the road to the north and continues right on, like I said, the water from like the southwest corner of the courthouse. All that water goes the four-way. So that's, I mean, there's, there's lots and lots of tube under there. Something to roll around, I guess.
We'll have to figure it out before the next summer, cause they're gonna be doing paving, they told us, you know, start, I forget the dates they were gonna start. The state is gonna asphalt from the four-way basically all the way to Prairieland if that's. Resurface.
Out there to where they do.
They take twenty-two feet from the center, twenty-two feet out. We're twenty-four feet, four foot lane now, the centers of roads, you're at the four, it's the way it reads. So the culverts and all that stuff on the side streets are ours.
And that gets into, and once again, that's serious call, I've. I guess that's my personal opinion on that, um. What's up there is not terrible bad, if it's ours, all it's used for is parking spots. I guess my, my personal opinion on it, it's gonna cost a lot of money to, to go through and even have the state do it. To resurface that, and if that's what you wanna do, that's fine, I mean, but I don't know that I would use our money on that one, our streets are the way they are. Their, the state is, the way it reads, like, like Eric said, the state takes twenty-two feet. And so like the parking spots along the courthouse and along uptown, all that, down through Casey's, all the way up through town is ours. So if we wanna budget to have them pave it when they come through and they do it all at one time, that, that spot from, right. But, you know, but we'll have to pay from the curb to wherever the state stops at, it'd just be the deal, they'd do it for us and I'm naturally, it would probably be better and a little cheaper, but. That's still gonna cost, I mean, you're talking several blocks of paving and in essence, at the end of the day, it's parking spots.
And if I'm not mistaken, they were gonna grind it off and.
Right, they're gonna, they're gonna take an inch off and put a, yeah.
Have a little bit of a lift, but it's nothing, can't live without, in the time I assume they.
Right.
You don't see any issues with the, the old being a problem down the road and in the near future?
I, compared to what our streets look like, I think there's other places to spend our money.
See, I don't think the sides look that bad.
No, they don't, it's just, it's just the fact of, the state's probably not gonna come back and do that for another. You know, it, it'll be several years before they do that again, so it's one of them deals of. It's, it's a good opportunity, if you wanna do it while they're doing it, you know, that's the deal, but.
I suppose having given estimate.
At the end of the day, like I said, if it's ours, it's, it's parking spots is what they are.
I thought the side streets that are going to fall would probably, like you said, be better off there.
That's just my recommendation.
Do you think they would just slope it off a little bit for us instead of just dropping it off for two inches?
Well, they're, they're gonna dig, they're gonna take, I suppose they're gonna come in and take an inch out and then put an inch right back in or two, whatever they're taking out. I don't, I don't think so, I mean.
There's gonna be a seam or.
Yeah, you're, you're gonna, you can't avoid that, there's gonna be a seam or something there, but.
Chip and seal it and probably get several years of use out of it.
Right.
Did you ever decide anything, you and Mark, I don't know, you talked to Mark, I forgot to ask him, about the deal with Jeff Dawson's runoff? Have we ever got anywhere on that in the courtyard?
I haven't heard any more about it, I, I know it was not recommended to put a tube in there. Just because of, there was some major concern with the health department and getting overrun with water.
Lucky's.
But the big concern was the northwest corner. So that one might have been, but the big concern was the northwest corner. Right, if that's where you're talking.
I haven't heard any more about that.
I haven't, I haven't since I kinda got brought up, but...
I think it's gonna be kinda like the one... Till the next big rain. Haven't you got started on the water lines or anything, you mean?
It's, it's in the, I mean, we haven't dug any yet, but I've kinda, kinda coordinating with Mike a little bit on that, cuz we'll have to have some help on it, I mean. Um, but, he's trying to get a sledge haul, and like I say, we've been busy working on budget and streets and we've still been putting some B six X and some bad holes that need fixed before winter and... Things of that nature, so... Our trash truck's been giving us some fits here the last week or so, so it's been...
What's, what seems to be the...
I don't know, it's got a, it's got an air issue, it's not building pressure. Um, we've, you know, we've looked in the dryer, we've changed filters, um, we took it down to Punky's last week and they put a new brake chamber on it and they found a leak in a line. And we were bringing home, thought I had it fixed and we got it out there the next day and it's the same story. So, we're taking it back down tomorrow, so which, it's always, there's never a good time for it to be broke down, cuz it's on the road, you know, so much. Um, so we're gonna take it back down in the morning, it's empty now and, uh, he'll have it for two days so he can maybe, it may be as simple as the other brake chamber or something, we haven't replaced any of those, I don't know, but it's, it's... It's not building pressure, so they can't run the route because you're on the brakes so much that it's bleeding the pressure off and you gotta put it neutral and rev it up to get it to even build pressure back. So, we've been running around with the trailer, that's where you seen the truck and trailer around town, kind of trash, just to try and keep things picked up. Just been using the truck for dumpsters. So hopefully we'll get that wrinkle figured out.
How many miles that truck got on it?
Oh, around eighty thousand, I don't remember the exact number, it's eighty, it's either high seventies or mid eighties, right in there.
I think Steve probably hurt some time ago, after doing that, I think he said seventy-seven thousand.
That could be, it's right, it's right around eighty thousand. So... Other than that, that's about the extent of what I've got.
Any other questions for Mr.?
Are we gonna go to a tandem on a trash truck?
I, I think we're gonna have to, um, you know, I mean, we're, our trash is growing, which is good, I mean, you know, trash, trash bringing, brings in good money for us, um...
Dumpsters are busy.
Yeah, and we, we keep dumpsters busy a lot and there's, the, the problem we run into is, it's the fluctuating that you just don't know day to day whether you're gonna get all the trash on or not. I mean, the last couple of weeks, we've been full and can't get dumpsters dumped that need to be dumped. Um, so I, I, I think we're gonna have to, have to go up, that's what I priced was tandems, it'd be five yards bigger. Um, but, there's always the concern of, it, that they are gonna be hard on the streets, that's, that's the downfall.
Turf free different, bids on different brands?
Well, I just, they, they put them all in the same chassis, this is what they recommended, um, I got the bits from Armor, that's where we bought the last two. But they gave me, they quoted me like three different trucks, but the one was, just to give you an idea, it went to, it's basically the same truck we had. And then they quoted me two different trucks with a twenty-five yard, they just got different beds on them, so... They said that's what they're going to, as far as the chassis is about anymore, they said they've got away from the internet and they're going back with freight liners on a lot of these with the Cummins Motors. Um, and it's handy, cuz we've got freight liner dealers relatively close, there's one in Palmyra and one in Quincy, so... Right, but those are closer than Plumby Beach.
Did they give us something for our truck?
They, there's a pretty good number on it.
Oh, really? What's the ballpark figure?
I don't got them, I guess if you wanna see it. Do something all around, I didn't make copies, but there's the two twenty-five yards, the bottom number being all out of pocket.
What is the number?
Twenty-five.
Ours is twenty-nine.
And you're pricing twenty-five?
Twenty-five, that's the next step up.
So why do you think we need bigger?
We can't keep it, we're, we're around a room.
Oh, cuz we've oversold trash, to rural people.
Business is pipping up.
To rural people.
But it brings us money, I mean, it, it makes you money.
What rural people do you talk to?
Well, when we like pick up a Mark Twain telephone and...
It's on the way.
I don't care.
Pays for part of our field.
Well, I don't think it pays that well, but I think the dumpsters are a big moneymaker for the city, I do think the dumpster is.
What are those numbers, can you just belt them out?
We probably won't at this time.
Next month they'll have them all out, they, these are tended anyway, I mean...
But you figure just to get the city...
Yes, I thought they were great bids.
The third one?
I didn't have any, it was... I didn't bring any point, cuz like I said, I, I really think the twenty-five is the only way to go, I mean, like I said, we, we're just growing. Like I said, the, the big, the big deal and a lot of it is, is the shingles anymore, our shingle dumpsters, and there's a special rate for our shingle dumpsters, but our shingles, they really picked up. There's a lot of, a lot of people that's using our shingles, you know, using the dumpsters for shingles, I guess they're saying, that takes up a lot of room and they pack hard. That's where these, one of these is a commercial grade, it says commercial on, that's the difference, so two different beds, same truck, two different beds.
So you really wouldn't be, I mean, it's not like your, the bigger trucks aren't gonna be that much bigger than the truck is now.
No, no, it's just the fact you go to a tandem axle versus the tag, which, our tag axle, we try not to run in around town, because it, it's pretty bad at chewing up streets when you turn with it. You know, the tandem will float a little bit, it's just gonna be more a weight issue.
Are you getting a, a twin screw with that?
What's that now?
A twin screw tandem, or just tandem?
Well, I don't know if they're all, if they're twin...
Probably not, one's, one side will probably be...
It's more of a, you probably have your weight axle.
I'm sure. They're bringing one up, uh, Thursday.
Thursday?
They're bringing us a demo, they're driving Thursday, so they're running, just running on the route, dumping and then take it back, just see if they like, if they'll get in all the places we need to get in.
A new one or...
Yeah, it's brand new, it's, it's, it, it won't be like the truck we're getting, cuz this one's got the push bar and everything on, we don't need any of that, but it's basically the same truck, the same bed, and it's just basically, so we get a feel for the bed and run it. The guy will bring the salesman, bring it up, he'll ride with them all day, Thursday. So we'll have a demo, you'll see a big truck in town Thursday, run around.
See, I bet it'll be on the streets, huh?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's the downfall, that's the only downfall I see with it, I mean, you know, like I said, it don't cost anymore to, to drive it, the landfill does the current truck, regardless, if you got a little room, you got a little room, but it's just the fact that, like I said, it'll probably be a little harder on the streets.
Might be that much harder?
And it's four more times, you know?
Driving in the middle of the road, driving on the...
Well, that's what we try and, you know, if you get some swell, we're trying to drive on and help smash them down.
Yeah.
That'll be the, the big negative, I guess, the only negative I see to it, but I think it's something we might need to do, it's like I said, it just, it's a nuisance when we're full. If it's, we're full halfway through the day and you gotta go running and picking up the trailer, you know, it's hard to get caught up. And like I said, dumpsters, yeah, yeah, and once you get behind, it gets to be a point where you're about gonna make a third trip to landfill to get back on top.
I've done that before too.
You know, and, uh, so, I think the twenty-five yards kinda way to go myself.
The twenty yards wouldn't be that much cheaper anyway.
No, it was, I don't remember how much, I was gonna say somewhere in that figure, fifteen, something like that, so... And like I said, we'll get some more definitely.
Well, I know people, I know we can't do it all, but there's a lot of people that's very unhappy with...
Um, we...
Very unhappy.
We can't, we can't go into competition with the oil, we can't go into competition with the oil.
That's alright, no, we can't, I didn't mean that, but...
Right.
That would be a time for a young...
There's opportunity to get more if you want them.
That would be a time for a young man to buy him a trash truck, you can get the whole county.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
About a whole one, if you want my one?
She don't even think about it.
Alrighty, any other questions? Good time, thank you, Ty.
So, is this a secret?
I don't know.
Next month.
I told about the change. Winter in northeast Missouri, that seems to be a problem.
I don't have anything for you, no extra add-ons that we need to do. Um, the numbers look alright, our flow's coming down a little bit, we did have a little bit of rain in October, but... Um, I attended a conference at the lake for Missouri Rural Water, it was interesting, some of the stuff that they are predicting to come down in the next few years, we'll keep our eyes on, but... Um, I will say the wiring that we redid, the seal wires and everything, you, you would, you would be utterly amazed at the, um, ability to look in that wire trough and be able to know what's in there and what's going on with that.
You got that straightened out?
Compared to what it was, I've got pictures and when we get, oh my goodness, when we get, when we get done, I'll show you the pictures of what it was and what it is now, cuz we're not quite done with all the pumps and everything, but it is... A night and day difference compared to what was in there and what we have to operate with now.
Is that trough something that we can...
It's, it's just basically, I call it a trough, it's just a cabinet, it, it's about four inches by four inch square and it's got, everything comes into there, we pull the wires into there and then they, there's some thing, and it goes into, um, disconnects or another panel where it communicates with the...
It's rodent proof mostly for the most part?
Yes, yep, yep, it's, uh, keeps everything out of there, but allows us to have an access point to pull wires or, or make an adjustment if we need to, but it, it's... It was, night and day, I couldn't believe all the stuff that was in there, cuz I, when you opened that up before, it was like, well, we must need all of that for something, because it's in there. But, once we've gotten everything new that's in there and taken all the old out, it is, there's about a third of the wires in there that, um, we used to have and everything, and everything's still...
So, so we know what they are now?
We know what they are, they're all labeled, they're all color-coded, we know where it goes, where it attaches to, inside the building and outside the building, we know which pumps they go to, yes, it's very, very operator friendly, that's, that was a, a great deal. But I don't have anything unless you guys have something for me. I'm gonna look at a new lawnmower, you guys can say yea or nay in the budget time, but ours is causing fits, we had several times in the shop this year and it's seven or eight years old. I'm, I'm, yep, yep, either that or I'll give them to you, and she said you could email them to her.
Yeah.
But it'll be a, I'm just gonna get a number from, probably from, uh, the farm shop, and then when we actually go to buy, I'll bring you the bids so we can, cuz we're several months from wanting to buy one, obviously, they're not gonna give you a number that's gonna be good for March of next year. That way you don't have to have three bids now and three bids later, well, I'll just get a ballpark figure for the budget and then we'll, um, line them down on the details and what we're gonna trade in and what exactly we want and... Everything, when we go to purchase one, we'll have a final number of what each one of them is gonna cost us.
When you need to push more?
Yeah, but see, now it's, now it's hourly, so the overtime would kill ya.
There's a drawback to everything.
Yep, so, then that, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Ty.
Officer Wyatt?
No report.
That's, that's good too, right?
That's good.
Unfinished business? Anybody having unfinished business?
What's, uh, update on the pine forest?
What are you asking, where is that pine?
Is this what I have right here?
That's what you have right there.
I didn't look at it, I just thought it was mine.
This is what we have found to be, I'm gonna look at it, get that whole business off the table so we can... There's a lot of sheets there, you can look at it. Any other old business while we glance over this? What about the cleanup over here? Shaw, haven't heard anything... From Mr. Shaw. Does this guy not have a street ready for winter? I hope so. He's running out of time, I would say.
So, they haven't been gonna look at the properties yet?
I would like to go along on that, if you could...
Yeah, I can let you know if they ever show up.
Yeah, I'd like to go on that too.
They've been gonna show up for what, you know?
Well, last month Kelly announced November.
Yeah. Yeah, this is November.
This is just November, yeah, when I...
However, he did not say what, November.
Yeah, you're right.
What's the property that's the problem?
Well, the building beside the building that is being demolished, the one across the street, has several issues.
How many, how many are there, fourteen, seventeen, something like that?
There are several.
TJ Liken Building, I think he owns it too.
The Liken Building?
Did he sell him a Liken Building?
I believe so.
There's several, but I don't have any. And the old building, they didn't get site, they put site in on that one time.
Look those up and there they are.
Did anything check out, you, Eric or Margaret? Have you looked through them very well yet?
I asked about it this morning when I went to work and got the front covered and there is now.
And I just saw too, that looked kinda alike to me, but there was a hundred dollar difference, so I'm like, okay, what did I miss?
Is this what you had to show?
See, don't they look kinda the same? This one?
It's gotta be a...
It's gotta be something. Fingerprints, fingerprints?
Uh, that's a models, model difference.
Yeah, but don't they look alike?
Yeah.
For a hundred dollars, gee.
That's wifi.
No, okay, I got you.
Oh, I had, a year ago, or whenever we talked about this week, yeah.
This, that seems to be the hundred dollar difference.
Unless you have a remote, transmitting.
Unless we had like a hundred employees, it's not...
If you could plug in the phone line and do it here.
I would still just be entering it... I'd just still be entering it manually, it'd still be like time sheet.
But they'd have to punch out their fingerprint or something.
Yeah, that's what they'd have to do, but I would just be entering it in the computer, just like our time sheets that we use now. And the only other thing I could offer is the fact that we only have eight full-time employees and if you count out the two people that work at City Hall since, since everybody knows when we're here, that just leaves six people. It looks like we could figure out how to make six people show up on time and, and, and put in their time without ordering this and, and then we'll need to draft a, uh... Something that will say, you know, who all has to use it, where they have to go, uh, because if Mike has to go down to the city shed or whether or not we have it here in City Hall for everybody. I mean, there's lots to put together in policies and procedures of using it, if that's what we get. And I think I mentioned before that I checked other towns and, uh, places like the size of Mexico, they use paper. Uh, then they do, a lot of them do have, say, like mayor or someone else will look at those, approve them, uh, you know, their time. It just looks like we could figure out something without having to, I mean, I realize it's D and R, you have a lot of employees there and you have to have something like that to figure out.
Yours probably doesn't make any electronic that's in the computer.
Yeah, yeah, they've got all the stores and go to make and they have one payroll lady.
Well, they use a stamp, they use a clock or something like that?
Finger, fingerprint.
Really?
So I think Peggy's got maybe at least three different ones there. I can be kind of crazy, I can think.
You were talking about procedures and what procedures do we have in place now?
Just the, the sheets that they're using.
Right, what procedures do we have? Right, what procedures do we have? You're talking about all the lateral procedures, procedures do we have?
Procedures just in our employee information just says when they work and when they get paid. Nothing else that says that they have to clock in or clock out or, or take an hour for lunch or.
Peggy, one time you talked about, you know, taking it off, off your shoulders and having more of a, like a three-man committee or something, what ever happened to that idea?
Somebody to look at the time clock maybe?
You're right, yeah.
That was a salary committee.
Oh, salary.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, she was talking about having an actual, let's say, for recommendations for.
Right, yeah, you know, like thick leaves and a lot of.
Right, yeah.
I would think it would be easier to keep track of overtime and time to have and something else.
Yeah, it's just, are we gonna need one, one time clock? I mean.
We'll put one down at City Bar and one here, and Mike can clock in when he comes into town tomorrow. And clock out when he goes home.
And then we deduct his lunchtime, cause obviously he wouldn't go by and clock in and clock out for lunch, I'm guessing. Or, I don't know, how he, he goes over his meter. And he's up there, he knows he has lunch. Oh, he gets lunch?
You get lunch, Mike?
Most of the time, about sixty percent of the time, I eat lunch at my desk. Thursdays and Fridays, I kinda hit the cereal bar a little bit. Chicken and fried chicken and hot, hot beef plates are a little hard to pass up for me.
So, one at the City Bar for Mike and the other guys, one here at City Hall for everybody else.
Same place was excluded, wasn't it?
Well, they're excluded from overtime.
From emergencies, well, they still need to clock in, they're not gonna do anything.
Right.
I don't ever work.
Why?
Because when, if you're on call, you get called out at, say, two o'clock in the morning.
Is it not timestamped on a timeline?
I'm just saying, you're gonna make somebody punch a time clock. You gotta come here and punch a time clock before.
That's gonna be excluded, cause it's gonna have a timeline when you get called out, that you can call down and request those records.
From Macon City.
You can, yeah, but I mean, I don't always call in to Macon when I get somewhere and tell them I'm here or I'm back home or whatever, so. Yeah, we have a lot of, the nights are, well, and weekends are on call.
So you get called out, don't tell them you've arrived and don't tell them that you're late? How do they know that you're safe?
I'll tell you, have they not blamed you? Have you ever dealt with nine one one?
No, I'm asking, I'm not.
Yes, I have.
It is a family now.
I haven't.
And I'm, I'm just saying, as far as the time clock goes, it's my personal opinion, if you're gonna make the police department punch a time clock. I said, if you get called out at two o'clock in the morning and I have to come up here and punch a time clock.
Not on emergency, you wouldn't have to.
Well, anytime you get called out for the police department, it's gonna be on an emergency or they wouldn't have called.
You'd come on duty at four o'clock in the afternoon?
I'm just, I'm saying on call time, like at two, three o'clock in the morning, when your phone rings and dispatch says, hey, I need you to go here. So, that's my opinion.
Well, it's low still, have it.
Well, maybe it's basic, we'll have the time.
So you guys are gonna call Macon every time and check our time to see what time make it, when you get called out.
If we have to, yes, we will.
That's. That's what trusting your employees.
Yeah, surely they can send us.
And I'm sure it's getting ready to go up.
Surely they can send us the paperwork for sixteen thousand a year.
I'm sure they can.
Stacy Baird, who's that?
Stacy Luxrie.
Remember where your previous, uh, moving in the, dumping wine from her room? So, yeah, she wants that garage.
I wonder if, uh. Jason, is he gonna approve for his shit?
Yeah, he was, we didn't get the paperwork.
He asked for it, but he didn't have any blue, paperwork down, did he bring it back in?
So we didn't.
No, I asked him several times if he wanted to apply and, and he's not to that point, I guess. He's kinda busy now with.
Little.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on if we have a little chat over. New business, the application for building permits. Would still pay them. We brought up the idea of having to look into it, we looked into it, and I want to put it on the agenda if anyone's pursuing.
Right, yeah, that's.
We can't do anything with it until they're put on the agenda. There's the directory of information, if you're convenient, you can look at it. Stacy Baird Garage at one oh six South Wilson Street, we have an application.
I have an application, but it doesn't really tell me where it's gonna be.
I think the mass and staple bill are all.
Oh, they like staple shit online.
Oh, is that it? Okay.
She's on Wilson.
I bet, I bet you are.
Oh, okay, there we go.
Margaret, you're slipping, this isn't like you.
So she's the one that has the.
Everybody remember this, the state, Margaret doesn't do these.
From the old house, okay, cause I was thinking the Joyce or House might.
Oh, yeah, Stacy gave us the really nice drawing.
It is very nice drawing.
Yeah, it is good.
Well, those are making more sense, yeah.
Any discussion or concerns? Your building is wonderful.
I make a motion to allow the permit.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Oh, second.
No, I didn't hear you, sorry, you can second.
You can be third.
Nah, I'm good.
Okay, then we got, well, now this.
Mister, oh, we'd like to build a garage at five oh six East Morgan Street.
It says house, but doesn't that have a trailer?
Well, that's his house.
It's already there.
Oh, I know it's a, that's why I've seen it.
Your building would be wonderful, I would venture to consider. Have you seen these?
That young?
You see any problems with them?
Nope.